Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 9th Council Committee Work Session. We have one topic this evening. It's going to be a discussion on property acquisition and disposition process that is going to be facilitated by Keith Niven, our Director of Economic and Developmental Services. And I just want to mention a couple of things about this before we get started. Council met last Monday night, Monday, April 2nd, in joint meeting with the school district school board. The discussion was on, we had, it's a number of things we talked about, but one of the things we talked about was the school district's potential interest in a parcel west of Swedish Hospital. And at that meeting, the city introduced a proposed timeline and process for council to address and resolve that request. I would say that resolution of these types of issues can run a whole spectrum from sort of the leanest process possible towards a more rigorous or thorough process. The leanest process possible is just, you know, the council could decide at the next regular council meeting, you know, to just say, "Let's sell it right now." That would be, that would be very lean indeed. Or decide not to, or to say, "No, we're not going to," one or the other. There runs a spectrum through, there was a process we were following last fall. There's a process that's proposed here tonight. And then we could, we could go to an even more rigorous or more detailed process beyond what the administration is suggesting. And it's really up to the seven of us. And we're not going to decide it tonight, but one of the things that I hope that we get out of tonight's meeting is we're going to get, we're going to discuss some specific questions and Keith is going to key those up. But, you know, the seven of us, and by the way, Mariah Batiste is excused tonight. She's not here tonight. So the six of us will sort of have to figure out for ourselves where we fall within that spectrum from the most lean process to the most rigorous process or thorough process. And again, we're not going to decide it tonight, but I think tonight we'll start to see a sense of the body of where the six of us who are here tonight fall on how we want to see going forward adjudication or resolution of this process. And that's, that's what I hope to get tonight is a sense of how the other five of you feel about it, and hopefully you'll get a sense of how I feel about it in the course of the questions that we, or the information presented by staff and the questions that we have for staff. So is there any questions from any of the rest of you before I hand it off to Emily? No, all right. Emily, Acting City Administrator?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention, and I believe we had shared an email with all council members to articulate that city doesn't have a formal process set out in the municipal code about acquisition and only a little bit about disposition, mainly copies state law with regard to the need for appraisals and for public process to sell property. We also have rules per our financial management policies and practices that govern disposition even more so than acquisitions. So we laid out in the memo just a little bit of history about the acquisition on the property and what we're creating together now is a process for potential disposition of the property should council decide to do that. Lots of options, as Council President Martz mentioned, the staff went through step one of a process that was a process that was discussed about a decade ago. And so we're following that process that wasn't formally adopted, but has been kind of the background that we use when we contemplate opportunities with land. And so that started with a conversation with our senior leadership team where we posed the same questions that we're going to show on screen for council members this evening. And as Keith and I walk through it, we'll share with you the substance of the SLT discussion. We, of course, did not get into more of the policy question or the opinion side of whether it would be appropriate to sell or not sell, sell to whom. We simply tried to lay out some of the facts as we see them in terms of history and documentation for intent on the property. So with that, I'd be happy to have Keith start the presentation.
Thank you, Emily. So what I want to do is kind of go through just really some background and context and a reminder of what we're talking about and the process that we went through last year. So the property that we're talking about is basically this area right here. It is city-owned. Looking at it on an aerial photograph, here is Swedish Hospital. This neighborhood up here is called West Highlands Park. The property that we're talking about is this area up at the top of the hill. This, the topography goes down towards I-90. And this graphic was used through the annexation and pre-annexation zoning conversation that we went through last year. The property that we're talking about is this one identified as 1C. And ultimately, the council decided to put the CFF zone on, which is Community Facilities Facilities. But the decision on whether or not that should be a school is really what we're having now. It's, this is the beginning of really that conversation. All that, all that the council did by putting the CFF zone on it is to allow for there to school, to be a school without a rezone having to take place. One of the, one of the issues that came up during that conversation is that we did not have an exact parcel dimensioned. This short plat and the boundary line adjustment is complete now. What I can tell you is this is the outline of that CFF parcel. As you can see, there's a dash line right here. And as, if you, if you remember, what we talked about was doing a boundary line adjustment with this other parcel, which is currently a detention pond, and allowing this parcel to be as far north as possible, which allows then this area to the south to stay as permanent open space. If you can see, the, the size of this property right now is 7.1 acres. And if you remember, part of the conversation of what this, the size of this property needed to be to accommodate a potential elementary school was probably somewhere around 6.7 acres, but because we enacted the tree code from the IMC and not Central Isiquod, there's a greater amount of trees that will be retained on the property. And so the property had to get bigger to accommodate more trees. So these were the four questions that we went through with you briefly, is that a week ago, in the joint meeting with the school district? And at this point, I think I'm turning it back over to Emily to facilitate this conversation, if she wants to.
Sure, we can do that. First, what I think I'll do is just review the input from the senior leadership team. So this is on page three of the packet, first page of the memo. So the questions that we felt were basic policy questions begin with, number one, are there any planned municipal uses for the property? And our answer to that as a team was that no, there wasn't a planned use for this portion of the property. A slide that Keith showed earlier depicted properties that were intended to remain open space properties. We also, at the time of annexation, were considering future use for King County parcel for the relocation of a business to facilitate our TOD project. And also, a WashDOT property was annexed at the same time, and that was considered to be the site of a future city water reservoir. So for this portion of the property, there were no planned municipal uses at the time of annexation. The second question is, how did the city acquire the property? Are there any limitations to its sale or use? And Keith laid out sort of the dominoes that occurred in our conversation with King County. Basically, we became aware of the county's intent or desire to sell some surplus property, and that became known to us at a point in time when we were talking about resolution to the Mallard Bay property and a local improvement district that was in default. So at that time, we were interested because we had goals to preserve open space and to facilitate this TOD project. And at that point in time, that upper lot had the potential for a variety of uses. It was deemed to be a buildable space, or at least in part. And the city believed that it might be possible to either sell part or all of the property in order to recoup some of our costs for acquisition for all of the property. There are no limitations on the sale of this property. The only limitation that we saw as a team is, of course, zoning and any natural property limitations, so critical areas, slope, geology. The third question is, is there a known public benefit achieved by retaining the property? And the senior leadership team or our department directors felt that yes, there are either known or possible public benefits for retaining the property. Those could include an opportunity to develop a public park on this parcel or to create a more direct trail connection from the West Highlands neighborhoods down to the Valley Floor. And by West Highlands neighborhoods, we mean everything west of 9th. And we showed you in the memo that the draft park strategic plan identifies this need for a park to the, to the west of 9th. We've talked about that too, as we looked through the capital improvement plan. And so the city has been exploring some opportunities for the last couple of years to locate an additional park in that vicinity. We also mentioned that there's a second opportunity that city is exploring at this Another known or possible public benefit is that our comprehensive plan and Mountains to Sound Greenway mission, of which we subscribe to, speak about conservation of the landscape and ensuring long-term balance between people and nature. And so retaining this property and preserving it as open space or as green space of some sort would demonstrate an adherence to those values and aspirations. Another possible known or a possible public benefit is an opportunity to utilize the property to achieve some other city goals. It could be a site where we could locate, for example, some affordable housing or perhaps another city facility that would serve our community. We also have environmental goals that are laid out in our green strategies, and that includes carbon secrusturation. The fourth question that the senior leadership team discussed was whether or not there's a known public benefit achieved by surplusing the property. And we felt that indeed there were known or possible public benefits for selling the property. Those could include the ask that you have from the school district, so it would be an opportunity to assist the district in citing a needed elementary school. Another possible benefit would be that the city could recruit its cost to purchase the property, and then those funds could be used to further the city's ability to achieve other priorities elsewhere in the city. We could also limit the city's future maintenance obligation by selling it to somebody else. And then lastly, we, we have an offer, an interested party that has approached us, but the city could also choose to conduct a request for proposals, and it may find another way to utilize the property to achieve other city goals, such as creating some affordable So those were senior leadership team answers to those questions. And I think Council President Martz, what we had proposed is that at this point in time, we either have a discussion with council members about those four questions. We also have a list of questions in the packet that summarize what we believe we've heard thus far from council members as potential follow-up items, items that you desired a little bit more information predominantly, I think, from the school district regarding their proposal. And we could review those if you'd like.
Well, I'm looking to my fellow council members, but I think that it would probably be good to start with those additional questions that we have. And I think one of the things that I would hope as we review those is get a sense if the administration has talked to the district about what the deliverables look like or what the anticipated deliverables are like on that. It would be great to sync that up with council's expectations to make sure that we're thinking of the same things. Does anybody else have any comments they want to make before we, if we talk about those questions? All right, can we do that?
Sure, certainly. So I'm starting with the list that begins on the bottom of page four in the packet. We have heard questions that fall into the areas of view shed, geotechnical traffic, and then the due diligence for the process by which we'll make this decision. So under view shed, we've heard that council would like to understand what development of the property might look like from, we said from I-90, but we certainly have heard from other locations, but predominantly on the Valley Floor, I think, has been the question. I would suggest that we have a representative from the school district, and they might be able to provide some clarity on what they would intend to provide to the council at this moment in time. I wouldn't want to speak for them. We've certainly passed along these questions. We've, they heard them at the linkage meeting as well. And I know they have begun thinking about how to present information.
If, if they're ready this evening to speak to how they intend to respond to these questions, it would be great to hear from them. If not, it would be probably better to get a response in writing.
Very good. I'll look over my shoulder in a second. The second one, under view shed, is could the property be developed consistent with the vision of the Greenway? And I believe that was one that we heard a little bit later. And I personally have not had a conversation focused on that item yet with the school district. But it's related, I think, to that first bullet, what can be seen on the property. So we have discussed with the school district some additional 3D modeling that may be helpful for us to envision and to take into account the cut and the fill on the property, which obviously affects the elevation of the building and the tree removal as well. Yeah?
A question along those lines of tree removal. You mentioned earlier that the retention, the tree retention policy in effect, there's, could you remind us, what is the percentage and, and, and you just, the last comment you made, Emily, was about tree removal. But what is the percentage that needs to be retained? And, and based upon their, any preliminary design, do we know where those would be on the property?
So the, the tree retention requirements from the IMC require 25% of the property to remain forested, but there are provisions that allow that to be reduced to 12 and a half if criteria are met.
I'm sorry, Keith, is it 25% of the, you said of the parcel?
25%.
Of the current stand of trees have to be retained, right?
Right.
Regardless of how big that is, it's 25%?
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And we've just been grossly assuming property size based on it being forested now, that almost, that would almost be analogous to a 25% of the property. But yes.
Okay, you started to say 12 and a half percent, and I was wondering more about where.
And, and to, to get to the, kind of, let me answer the second part of your question first, and that may answer the outstanding piece of the first part, is we do not have a design at this point. The school district, based on the tree retention code that was adopted by council, made some assumptions on how big this parcel needed to be to accommodate an elementary school. So with the tree retention requirements and having to comply with that. So I'm assuming they've done some site plans, but I, we, we do not have any applications that have been submitted yet for this parcel by the school district.
Can you talk, just, can you talk about the option to take it down to 12 and a half percent? You mentioned that.
So that's in, that's in the code right now. So there's a set of criteria that can be used by a property owner to request reduction from the 25% down to 12 and a half. If you'd like for me to get you that code section, I can do that.
Well, not the code.
I do not know that section of code that's on my head.
Yeah, that's okay. But just under general, what, what, what would happen? What would be necessary or would need to happen to take it from 25 to 12 and a half percent?
So there's mitigation that has to be provided. So there is a, to reduce it, that additional amount, there has to be criteria satisfied, and then there has to be additional mitigation provided in the form of either fee in lieu of or additional trees planted elsewhere.
And Keith, who ultimately would make that decision?
So that's an administrative decision by Development Services Department.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. The next bullet was geotechnical. We had heard the question posed as, is the property safe for development? We believe that that question will be answered in part by the school district prior to purchase as part of their due diligence, and that application would certainly require a geotechnical assessment. And the city has a practice on slope property of requiring a kind of peer review, a double, a double, a separate geotechnical review to kind of validate or invalidate results of the first.
Do you have a question, Paul?
Yeah, I do, but I, I'll wait.
Good, after you.
So I, I know that there's been some geotechnical work already performed. We've, last year, we were provided that, that information. And having the opportunity recently to walk the property, I took the time to try to get a sense of the surrounding forest adjacent to this property. It's all downhill, right? And it, it, it was pointed out to me about some of the, maybe the kind of natural or some of the groundwater properties of that area. There had been a time when water was, was seeping out of that hillside in, on this property. Now it's not. There's been some changes over time, and it made me wonder, especially when you look kind of downhill from there, about the health of the rest of the forest. So at least downhill from this property. I think it's very critical that the, in this island and the way it was zoned upon annexation or to be zoned, a lot of it is open space. And I think that spoke to the council's desire to leave it in its, and at least in the state or maybe better than it is right now, at least to have the standing trees on it. And when we talk about the geotechnical assessment of this particular property, one thing that I would be very interested to try to understand is that can we, with any reasonableness, forecast what the effect on the lower non-treed portion, not on this, downhill, downslope from this, what might be the effect on that forest, the portion of the forest, should this parcel be developed? There's, there is, you know, whatever type of water there is there now, however it's feeding that forest. So that's a long way of kind of saying that in this process, I would value getting some professional assessment of what the ongoing health of the forest downslope from this parcel would be.
Okay, thank you. I understand the question.
Okay.
So my question was going to be, is any of the parcel as envisioned presently critical
I don't know the answer to that question.
Because that would, that would encumber it with a very different set of rules regarding tree removal, right?
Possibly. So there's a, so a critical area slope has a top of slope and a toe of slope buffer associated with them and a setback from that. And whether or not this is 40% with a 20-foot rise on the top, because really what you're talking about is the top of the knob, I don't know the answer to that, but I could, we can look at that and give you an answer to that question.
I was trying to find the GIS layer, because I think there's a GIS layer, because I've seen it for my own property, because very little of my property is not critical slope. But it does seem like, you know, we're not going to answer this question tonight, but I do wonder about it, because I saw that there was a memo, or not a memo, a note that came out earlier today that I think we're going to be talking about in a little bit that has to do with roots. And in it, I noted the, you know, I was taking a look at the process and how different it is for critical slope and retention policies being different. So anyhow.
Okay.
Something related to the slope, I think, it's really related to slope stability, right, is the reason why those, part of why those, those requirements exist.
Yes.
So it's wrapped up in the answer to that question about slope stability, I think.
We have that question documented.
Excellent. Other questions about this one before we move on? All right.
Fantastic. The next area of questions that we've heard deal with traffic. So one question is, can Discovery Drive accommodate traffic from an elementary school in addition to the hospital-generated traffic? And I don't have new information for you at this time, and we can either pose that question to the school district to help us understand what they're preparing, or we can get that formally from them after this meeting. Certainly, traffic generation is something that is studied, and we are given a report on possible impacts as part of the land use application.
So and just, if I can add one thing?
Go for it.
Sorry, I'm sitting in your blind spot.
As many of those.
So unlike the rest of the Highlands, which was covered by the Grand Ridge EIS, this property is not part of the Highlands. And so whatever happens, whether it's a school or subdivision, or as long as it's something other than open space, there would need to be a traffic study that would come with that. And, you know, one of the biggest things that needs to be assessed is the ultimate configuration of Discovery Drive. Discovery Drive right now, and that's this east-west road that comes off of 9th and Highlands Drive, the north half of that street was never finished because it was going to be the obligation of Microsoft. As Microsoft sold that property to now Shelter Holdings and Polygon, this ultimate street configuration is being sized to accommodate those number of entitlements that are being landed in that neighborhood. And if this were to be an elementary school, that would need to be added to that evaluation. Sorry.
So can I ask the question maybe a little bit differently? So we have a base level of service on our streets of E, right?
D.
E, that's what I meant to say, D.
Yes.
And so is it safe to say that by hook or by crook, at the end of the day, all these streets have to be, there have to be, there's going to be a traffic study and there would be mitigations, whatever it would take to get to a level of service D?
At the intersections, yes. So at, at Highlands Drive, at 7th and 8th, all the So at Highlands Drive, at Seventh and Eighth, all the intersections of Discovery would have to function at that level of service.
And how about the streets down by Swedish?
So down here on Blake, like Blakely. So the traffic study would need to look at, at the network in these neighborhoods. If there was an impact down here, it would have to be mitigated. I can't imagine there would be, but yes, it would have to be looked at by the traffic engineer.
I think, I think that it's something we've consistently heard in the community, right, is a concern around, would the traffic for the elementary school affect operations at Swedish? And it seems like that's an important part of that traffic study for us to be able to speak intelligently about that concern in the community.
Absolutely. I mean, as we all know, if we've had elementary school-aged kids that we've taken to school or picked up, you know, part of the issue is where do parents queue? And, you know, as we, if we were to look at an elementary school in this location, that would be one of the biggest things that would need to be addressed, is where would those parents queue in the morning and in the afternoon? And one of the things that we heard when we met the new Swedish CEO is that they have a shift change about at the same time as the PM pick up for an elementary school. So obviously, there's, there's going to be a traffic issue that needs to be worked through.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Along the same lines, I had communicated in the questions that I had, and also communicated to the school board president, Ann Moore, that one of the concerns I have is the difference between traffic studies that were done before elementary schools were built, such as Grand Ridge, and what, what we're actually finding on the ground. Similar to Central Park, when we looked at renovating Central Park, which was just reopened, one of the questions was, well, what's really on the ground and what's, what's different now than what we anticipated? And the result was, there's more traffic on the ground than we had anticipated, which resulted in the need for a light at Central Park Drive and Park Drive. And so my request is that we get some updated, the district do updated modeling for some of the schools. I know that by saying it, it sounds easier than it is, and I recognize that, and that I don't need to go into great detail about my knowledge or lack thereof of traffic modeling. And I know that there are changes, like kindergarten students aren't at Grand Ridge anymore, for example. But I think it's important, when the district is making claims about how many parents will drive to school versus how many kids are walking to school, I think those are important numbers to have accurate, because this is a, traffic would be a critical issue to me in this area.
Councilmember, council, council member Ramos?
Thank you. Yeah, and, and traffic, as we always know, will tend to find the easiest route. And I think your comment about getting the side streets and those other ways around is part of the, part of the picture is very important. The other thing that's important is simply the design of the school. What I've seen in a lot of schools lately, it appears to me that they're designed in a way that it's really, makes it very easy and encouraging for parents to drive their school, their kids to school and drop them off, because there's a route that goes right up to the door. And there's, you know, and that is encouraging, where the buses actually have to, the kids have to sometimes walk further from the buses than they do from a private car. And that encourages that. And in this case in particular, where traffic's going to be an issue, as you said, how many people are going to really drive? Because it seems like we have a lot more people driving than normally anticipated. And if it's designed that makes it easy, then that's going to make that encouraging. Versus a design that it's not easy to drive your kids to school, you can't get close enough to do, to drop them off, to make it easy, then they're encouraged to get there another way. That is a big difference that could be in the design and how that works or not. Because if it's easy, people are going to do it, because I know what it's like, kids, you're running late, and what are you going to do? You jump in the car and get them there, right? So you have to think of that, that design part of it is encouraging or discouraging.
Other questions? All right.
Another question that we heard under traffic was, how does siting a school here affect busing? And that related to what's the expected capture area for this school? So as councilmember Goodman spoke about, kindergarteners now are bussed out of the Highlands to other elementary schools. And so I think the underlying question was, how will, might the patterns change for busing students in the Highlands?
That would be a perfect example of, it would be a good idea to get what the district expects to deliver in response to that question, to make sure that it dovetails with what council is hoping to hear on this question.
Okay.
Thanks.
And then the last area of questions that we had summarized was around due diligence and process. And I spoke about this a little bit at the beginning, that we do not have an adopted step-by-step procedure for land disposition. We do have some requirements under state law and guidance and municipal code about specific situations. So our, is a question under this umbrella would be, is the process that we've identified, the one that council wishes to pursue, is that a process that appears to provide sufficient opportunity to consider this property's value and whether the council wishes to sell it or retain it, and within that timeline that we have described? Keith's bringing up the flow chart now. So we had our senior leadership team discussion, as you see in that first blue bubble. We're at the second one now with the council work session number one. We had proposed the possibility of a second work session to perhaps report back on answers to these questions, allow you to continue your discussion about process and options, and then possibly returning to council, either for a decision, a public hearing will be required if council desires to sell the property. And that could happen in June. There's always an option to refer to committee. That could happen in mid-June. And then the council decision would be pushed off until July. And the bottom of the chart just simply demonstrates that there's two choices there, either to, two outcomes, either to retain it or to surplus it. And if it's surplus, there's two options under that. It's either to perhaps surplus, sell it, to, through direct sale, possibly to the school district, or to conduct an RFP process to see what other options are out there.
Councilmember Goodman?
Yes.
Thanks. First is kind of a simple question, and that's the possible referral to a committee. It was interesting that it services and not land and shore, only because I was on land and shore a couple of years ago, or maybe three years ago now, when we had, I don't know if it was, maybe it was surplus property. And so I just, it was interesting to me that it was possible referral to services, not land and shore. Is there, what's the thought on that?
Yeah, and I can, I can let Keith speak to this, but I, I think we're open to entertaining other suggestions. Land and shore deals with land kinds of issues, certainly. Services also deals with financial matters of the city, so this could fall under that bucket. Keith, do you have other?
This seemed, this seemed more like the conversation about the sale of an asset. And so, rather than a land use decision. And so I think the suggestion was services because of that fact.
Well, I think that, based on the questions I've heard, it's probably more about land use than it is about selling an excess tractor. But that, I mean, we don't have to make that decision, I'm just saying.
So you're sitting right next to the chair of the council services committee.
Yeah.
How would you feel, councilmember Ray, about having this go to land and shore rather than services?
I think, given the nature of the conversation tonight, it seems more appropriate to be at land and shore than it does at services.
Well, there we go.
Then again, the other thing we can do is we can do a double referral, too. We could send it to both.
We are the chairs.
Since we have the chair sitting right here.
And it doesn't matter that I'm the chair, that just popped out of me.
No, I appreciate that. I think it, I think because it doesn't necessarily fundamentally change the, the projected potential timelines to go to both, I don't have any, I wouldn't have any problem with having to go to both. Chris?
You know, the one thing that I would like to see, and I think this is something that councilmember Winterstein brought up when this was first being discussed, it would be really nice to have a well-defined and repeatable process that's not a, not a, reinvent it every time. So I think if, whatever precedent we set here, whether or not it goes to land and shore, or whether it goes to services, or whether it goes to infrastructure, or whatever, or if it just goes to the cow, whatever it is we establish needs to be something that we can have as a repeatable and well-understood process going forward.
Understood. Councilmember Goodman?
I would ditto that. I have other questions. Where it says community input and new information.
But before you, before you go on, can I just get?
Yes.
Does anybody have, does anybody have a problem with the idea of sending it to both of these two committees in this, in this process? Did you have a comment, Paul?
I do, thank you. Keith said earlier that the lens they saw through showed more of a sale of an asset. And I understand the, the, kind of the purposes of all our committees pretty well, but I don't, I wonder, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, that should it come to land and shore, why we couldn't also, I mean, the entire package, including that element, sale of an asset, why that couldn't be part of the conversation at land and shore as well?
Let's do this. Let's, the suggestion has been made, you know, we don't need to take any sort of a formal decision tonight, but I'll discuss with the city administrator and the mayor's office how this, how we would, so to speak, parcel this out between the two committees, and what would potentially make sense and what wouldn't. And we can come back and talk to the chairs about that. Administrator?
That sounds great. Thank you. Happy to have that conversation. I, I think also what we're attempting to do tonight is just get some consensus, as much as we can, about how many meetings you think you might want to have. It would be certainly helpful to the school district, and I'm sure to community members, to have a good understanding of what the process is going to look like going forward. Now, that, that doesn't mean we absolutely have to decide tonight, but one objective that I would have is, by the next time we have the work session, to have a little bit better clarity about the timeline going forward.
Right. Although I do want to point out that doing this wouldn't necessarily change the end dates at all, which is, which is one of the, you know, one of the areas that many parties to this are most keen to understand, right? So. Did somebody have a question? Oh, yes. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I have a question about the, wouldn't change the timeline part, just because it seems that it does affect the timeline to some degree with the June.
It could.
Yeah. It eliminates the possibility of going straight from, which it looks like it was a potential to go straight from council work session to a decision. In this case, we're talking about adding in the two committees, so it would probably be definitely by July.
That's correct.
Okay.
Good point. Councilmember Goodman?
The community input and new information bubble up there, I would, two questions. What was the administration contemplating regarding new information? Is that new information that might be presented by the school district regarding the questions that are asked?
Yes.
Okay. And what, what would be the due diligence that the city itself would do about whether it wants to recommend or not selling this land to the school district for school?
I'm open to your suggestions. We have not contemplated a process for that other than through your public meetings and the input that we receive about numerous agenda items that we have before you.
Well, then, I can.
Did you have further?
I have suggestions, or we can save that for comments, unless we're doing questions and comments at the same time.
Well, why don't, why don't, why don't you proceed with your box?
Okay. I would think at a minimum, the city would need to do its own appraisal. And the city probably needs to do its own Arbers Report. Maybe need to do some geotech work, considering the location of this problem, sorry, the location of the land and the problems that have already been cited from the past. And I'm also thinking maybe some potential traffic modeling. Just, as I look at the map, I am very concerned about making the decision to sell the property without feeling somewhat comfortable that we could deal with the traffic appropriately.
Potts? Chris, you look like you have?
I have some, I have a couple of questions. So the reason we're having this discussion is because this, this is a question. The school district approached us and said, we'd like to buy that parcel of land for an elementary school. So if someone else were to approach us today and say, we'd like to buy that school to build a community center, you know, a movie theater.
By the parcel?
Huh?
You said school. You mean by the parcel?
Someone else wanted to buy that parcel. Would we entertain that, too? Would we go through the same process with that overture, or that, if someone came forward with that request?
The overture being this kind of dialogue and?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious.
Decision-making flow chart?
You know, this is a process we started because the school district came and said, hey, this is a great spot, we'd like to buy it, you know, let's, let's talk. And I'm just, I was just curious, would we go through the same process with, if Paragon came and said, well, provide they had development rights, whatever, but someone came and said, I'd like to develop, turn this into a whatever, something else other than a school?
Yes, we would go through a very similar process. As, as property owner, all of you get to make the choice as to what to do with the property. So we would want to present both a proposal and discussion on options.
So I think, I mean, I think one of the things is, you know, the outcome down there at the last box, councilmember Ray, you know, if, if ultimately the city felt like, yes, we're ready to surplus the property, and no, we want to, we want to see what's out there and not necessarily go with the only offer that's on the table, that would be the RFP approach. That, if, if the council were to go through that, you know, that would be, you know, there would be only a certain number of things that would fit within the CFF zone. Most things, most other land uses would require a comp plan amendment and a rezone to something else. But that would be part of the process that you guys could evaluate.
I'll also point out that one of the things we would need to do in this conversation, if there was a, if there was a second potential use, is to understand to what extent our engagement is, is covered by the GMPC and King County rules that have to do with cities collaborating closely with school districts, right? We have a, a legal responsibility, not, we don't have a legal responsibility to sell this property to the school district, but we have a legal responsibility to collaborate on, on, you know, land use and, and how schools get put together. So I think that would have to be considered in any competing use conversation. So there aren't other entities that have the same level of legal requirements for consideration. Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, I was going to kind of basically say the same thing in that fact that, because the fourth question is, public benefit achieved by surplusing it? I don't think there's many other places that we would consider, to be honest and upfront, you know, much use of this property, because as we, as we obtained it, we purchased it, you know, in my mind was, you know, open space. You know, that was the, you know, planned use. Now it's changing. So we're actually, it feels to me like we're creating this process, which is fine, because we're, you know, that's, that's a big benefit. So we're going through this process to, to see how we can, we can look at that. So to me, I guess, to answer the question, it feels like this is because of, you know, who's requesting it with a greater need in the community than some other need, right? But I guess, back, but I want, I want to go back a little bit from, because I didn't get in earlier. On, on the date part, look at, there's a council decision, June, July. And we're talking about getting community input in there, you know, in this next month, basically. And I'm not sure, again, how that's going to happen, and we're going to get enough answers. And I'm not sure again how that's going to happen, and we're going to get enough answers to where we can make a decision. As, as Councilwoman Goodman said, I mean, is there going to be data that's going to tell us that, right, versus concepts? And that I'm concerned with a little bit. But at our last meeting with the school district, there was a big concern from at least one of the board members, and I haven't got a chance to get back and talk with them, but this hitting July versus June. And for us, to me, it doesn't matter, June, July, same thing. But I heard that that was a big deal to them, that going to council decision in July because of the public ability to have input in July because of school years being different than city years. So, and I don't see it moving much faster than that. This is pretty fast. And I'm not sure how to accomplish that. Like I say, I haven't been able to talk to this person again personally on that. But if we're going to do that, we need to make sure we get that in there early on, because if they're afraid that there's not going to be a public input, once this school lets out, then we need to somehow figure out how to get that in there beforehand. So that's just, you know, that's just a technical thing of getting all that public input in. And I think that's going to be tough in this short time period, including that particular interest from the school district.
So, so I have a question. So I heard a suggestion from one of our council members that the city do some due diligence, and it was around appraisal, arborist, geotech, and traffic. Do we normally, how much of that do we normally do on our side, or have we done in the past when considering sale of property?
So the appraisal is a must, because we cannot sell property at less than it's valued. Except?
Yes, except if you can also articulate a public benefit. There are a few ways that we can sell for less than market.
True. The balance, the other, the other three pieces, geotech, arborist, and traffic, typically those are done by the buyer and not the seller. I can understand from a policy standpoint, why traffic is one that would be an interesting one to see if we can unravel before a decision gets made. You know, I believe that the school district has already done an arborist report. We haven't seen it, but that's out there. You know, geotech, so to touch on Councilmember Winterstein's comment earlier, I'm dubious that anybody, anybody who tells you they know where the water from this property goes, I would say lies. So this, this, this property up here, we, there's a huge infiltration gallery called the Blue Lagoon up here that Port Blakely built. That water blew out Camp Creek. When Microsoft built this pond, which is now a subdivision, they believe they had a direct conduit to the aquifer. That water came out at Clayton Springs. So if, if anybody thinks they can understand the hydrogeology of this area, I would say, isn't going to happen. I think the only way that anything could get built here is all of the water gets captured and gets piped probably to this pond. So I'm just going to say that now, even though I'm not a hydrogeologist. I think trying to put any water into the ground here. So your question about if you potentially cut off this seven acres from infiltration, how would that affect the health of the trees on the slope? Don't know the answer to that. Arborist will tell you that trees capture 25% of the stormwater. So we're dealing with 75% infiltration, which is not infiltrating any longer, so. But whether that goes here, or whether that drains to the north, most of this stuff does try to go towards the lake. The reason this hit this way and went south is there's a layer of clay underneath this that basically caught the infiltration, and it went sideways. Surprise to us. All right, so it's a history lesson. Sorry.
Administrator Moon?
Yeah, the other thing that I would add to answer Councilmember Goodman's question or desire for additional information is we have a limited amount budgeted for some of those pieces, and not all. Traffic modeling is definitely one of the ones that we didn't set aside any money in this year's budget to do a model update around this particular possibility. So one thing that might need to be considered is an appropriation. So we'll need to, if that's the desire of the council, then we may need to build that into our timeline.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I want to follow up and make a couple of comments. First of all, this is a unique situation. This, this property is unique. It's had some unique difficulties, challenges in the past. We're talking about a fairly significant development there on an interesting ledge covered with trees that's going to take a lot of excavation. And the city owns it, and before the city does anything with the property, the city would have to know its land for any development. And if the decision is made to sell to the school district, the city would have to invest some of that money anyway. I thought I heard a peer, a second geotech anyway. The city has to do an appraisal anyway. And the, the other two shouldn't be too terribly difficult to get the school district's arborist report, and then get a peer review from another arborist. So I don't, I just, so I just kind of disagree with the notion that we don't, we don't typically do this, and so why would we do this here? It's not often that the city considers selling a hilltop piece of land for a substantial development. And I would think that it's very important that we invest the money to know what the potentials are on our own land that we're considering selling. Sure, but we're happy to do that. We understand the desire for that sort of due diligence and proceeding with some confidence and caution. I think Keith was simply saying, across the board, when you look at transactions in the city, it's not usually the seller that does that work. And thank you for clarifying. Peer view might be okay for tree study as well. That's helpful. That creates a different scope of work and cost.
Councilmember Hunt?
I think that I would also like to see many of the things that Councilmember Goodman asked for, including the arborist report, the appraisal which would be done, the geotechnical report, it also already says that it will be done. I think that with the arborist report, I know that there was an arborist that went out and looked at the site. There has also been an arborist with the city that looked at a small part of the site. And so I think, I think as part of our due diligence, we should have an arborist look at the site, especially given the complexity of the slope and the potential conditions on that slope. I also wonder about the potential for mapping and updating the critical areas on the site. It is noted in the arborist report that I have that there are critical areas. And so updating that and what the implications are for that on the trees and also, and, and I think that it's a big question about what the development does, how the development changes all of these variables in terms of the trees and what it does to the water and what it does to the health of the trees on the slope, not just the trees that would be removed if this were a development. So given all of that complexity, I think this is a special situation that deserves extra attention and extra due diligence in those areas, and I would definitely like to see more information on those.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. With all of that, and it sounds like quite a list, in this process, in front of us here, the shortest path, the earliest anything could be done, could possibly be done, that it's contemplated here as a council decision on June 4th. And the only chance, the only way that has even a remote chance is, is that there is a pretty healthy and complete package of information on May 14th. I probably don't have to tell you guys that, but that, that just puts that much, if that's ever going to happen, if that were to happen, it would require that there's a heck of a lot on May 14th. And the other thing I wanted to mention too was, in terms of community input, this very question, even though we were considering acquisition, zoning, and annexation, we do have a pretty healthy body of existing community input from last year on all of that. And, and I certainly intend to, you know, reconsider all of that in what, in what we've got going forward from here as well. So, and that's significant. I mean, many of the same questions, I haven't, you know, there, the, the extra council questions that were asked here about Viewshed, about geotech, and about, about traffic. We, we've got a huge body of public comment about all of those issues. So I just want to remind, we should not, not, I don't want to toss any of that aside. That's also very important for us to consider.
So I want to point out that, that one of the interesting things about this evening is, is we have, on the one hand, we have a conversation about developing a repeatable process that we want to use. And on the other, we have, I think quite reasonably, council members who say this is a very special piece of land that we want to sort of measure twice and cut once. And, and I get that. Like, I think that that, as much as I want to develop a repeatable process, just speaking as me here for a minute, you know, the public comes to me all the time and asks me questions about this, that, or the other thing. And people are going to come to me and say, you know, how do you know it's not going to ruin the views of this square? How do you know it's not going to slide? How do you know it's not going to ruin access to Swedish, right? And I just have to, I have to be able to answer those questions. And people, you know, while I want a repeatable process, our, our job in, in crafting public policy is a mix between setting things up that are repeatable and addressing what the community's concern is. And I think we're hearing that a little bit tonight in, in, in our, in the comments from, from the six of us. So to me, it feels like appraisal, arborist, geotech, all sound fairly straightforward to do. My question is going to be on traffic, and it potentially, it's a potentially large enough piece that I don't necessarily understand what us doing that work as well would do to the process. And I also, you know, I want to make sure that towards this issue of repeatability, you know, in what situations do we want to do our own calculations on things? And what, and in what situations do we want to let the buyer come to us with information, like we often do in other cases? So I'm not, just personally, I'm not as sold on us doing the traffic piece until I understand what the implications would be for the process of coming to a timely yes or no on this property, speaking as one of seven. So. Councilmember Ray?
Just a quick question. How often do we sell property? I mean, is it a, you know, a couple of times a year, every other week?
No, very infrequently.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm kind of rethinking this. And the reason we don't probably have a well-defined, repeatable process is because it's very infrequent, and each one is very unique, and each one has very special circumstances surrounding it. So probably trying to put a one-size-fits-all process to a process we do every couple of years really doesn't make any sense. I think this is a situation where there is a need for some judgment, and each situation is going to be unique. And this one is particularly unique because it's a pretty unique piece of property, and, and it's a wooded hillside that we, you know, have some desire to maintain. And so as we start to carve into that, literally, it has all sorts of implications. So I think the reality of it is, we do it so infrequently, and each one's unique, that the process is going to be unique.
Other comments right now, before we go back into the, Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. On the, the, how general is this process question? I think that there are these questions at the first step. Are there planned municipal uses for the property? How did the city acquire the property, et cetera? I think there, it may be that there are some cases where those questions are straightforward, and you come to the end, and those questions sort of send you down an expedited path towards making a decision, and you don't need the extra steps, and you don't need the council committee to review, et cetera. I think there are also cases where those questions generate more questions and more need for discussion. So I think that, in my minds, this is a good process in terms of being a thorough version, and maybe there are some situations where you have a decision tree, or sort of choose your own adventure, where you go down a quicker path, that if there's, there's some clear answers right after that first step, and it's clear that, for example, if there's a clear limitation on the sale or use of the property, that probably sends you down a very different path than what we have here, where there isn't that, that decision node in the decision tree.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, and I guess the thing that feels awkward here for me, or I think is going to feel awkward, is how much information we have before we make a decision to sell, right? Because, because this is a critical piece, this is something in my mind we wouldn't be considering if it wasn't for the benefit of a school. So, and if we sell, then is all control gone, right? Because once the school takes over, they have, they control their own CEPA process. They have, they're have their, you know, they can do all that themselves, right? So how much input do we have? Do we have a need, some of the things we talked about is a need for a public park up there. You know, is that something that might be part of it, that the school's playground has to be part of a public park? I mean, that could be something of, I'm just talking out loud here again, possible requirements that in two months, I don't know if we could be able to make those requirements, right? If the road on traffic, you know, the roads up there, as far as, they're just too narrow for much traffic. They're really bad. The thing might be, we have to totally widen that road, as we did Central Park. That road had to be widened because it was designed that doesn't function for those crowds. So is that going to be a requirement? And how much of those things, I got a bunch of other ones like that, that I'm concerned about with, you know, design of ease of single parents driving, or individuals driving kids to school, one kid in a car versus otherwise? Because it's still a mile away before you get a bus to a school, at least I'm assuming. So it's a lot of people from the other side of the road are not going to, you know, want to walk to school, even though it's, some might, but very close. But there's going to be other kids coming from further away than easily walkable distance. So how do you fit all those things in there, and design all that stuff into the school to make it work where we're comfortable with it as a city? And it's kind of like, where do you draw that line, is where I'm having that problem? Because I would like to draw that line way down the road where we have total control for the things we care about, right? But if we do that, this is going to be a very long process. So how do we get that middle ground of, what can we do to make this process happen and still feel we have enough control that it's going to be within the things that we need as a city to take care of? That's what I think is going to be the hard decision point on this, and where that fits in there, and how much information we're going to get in studies or whatever.
And I guess another way to talk about that is, we have a process here. If we decide to surplus the property to the school district, is there, what does the process look like after that? We get to a yes-no decision, we say yes or no. If we say yes, is there still, you know, is there still a process beyond that yes decision that involves, on the city side, either administratively, obviously there is administratively, but is there a public process at all beyond the yes? And you don't have to answer it from the deis right to second, but I think that as you come back, or if you want to answer it right now from the, or from the microphone, you certainly can. But I think that's, that's part of a question, right? What is, how do we know that we're going to get, under the assumption that we're not going to see hard and fast everything written down, every tree, every parking stall, you know, a month from today, how do we know, you know, how do we see closure on some of these things beyond, if, if, if we get to yes?
So, so let's assume we're talking about a school. So a school has to go through a certain permitting process, that's outlaid in the city code. That would have to go through development commission, and so that is, that is that. That doesn't include city council, but that does include a public process. Because you guys are the potential seller, you can put whatever conditions or stipulations on the sale of that property that you might want, I think, as long as they're legal. So, I mean, so for example, if, if you wanted a certain thing to happen, and I don't know what that is, you know, you could potentially write that into the purchase and sale agreement, assuming the school district would be willing to agree. assuming the school district would be willing to agree to those terms, you know, that would be part of the contract of them buying the property. So there is, so through this process, if you find some hooks that you are interested in, I think that's a conversation between the city and the school district on whether that's a mutually agreeable hook, and if so, then that gets, that could be part of the purchase and sale.
Councilmember Winters, time.
Thank you. I want to take you up on, just a hypothetical along those lines. Let's talk about traffic. When we were considering, I think it was the TDR question last summer, there was quite a bit about traffic input, impact of the additional 100 residential units. And this council wanted to see a traffic analysis, and if, and any, and what the mitigation would be if it had to be mitigated. Prior to that, the administration's position was, it would actually be kind of terms of this deal that down the road, you know, afterwards, you would do the, you would complete that traffic impact, and it would have to be sufficiently mitigated. And the, you remember that? And it's kind of like, no, the council wanted to kind of see that before we made a decision on the TDRs. And it was, so the whole idea of maybe traffic impact already being brought up tonight, and we've already had part of that conversation, maybe hypothetically to this point, there may be some outcome in terms of traffic mitigation that we might be able to articulate, and saying, we don't know what the traffic study is going to show, we don't know what mitigations it's going to require, but we want to see, you know, this result, for example. Would that be, does that seem to fit what you were describing? Is that a possible way we could use this?
Sure. Good. I mean, I think an obvious one is, the city could stipulate that the city is the CEPO lead agency and not the school district.
Other questions right now? All right, should we keep going?
Who's driving?
I looked at Emily.
All right. So that's the last of the questions that we had captured and summarized. I think possibly it would be good to go back to those basic questions that are on the flow chart, really small.
You want to go the other one?
Maybe so, yeah.
Where was the other one? Oh, sorry.
Oh, actually, before you do that.
Yes.
So, is it your understanding, don't, flow chart, please.
Flow chart.
Yeah, before we get back to all that stuff. So, is it your understanding that it is the school district's expectation that they will be providing answers to the questions that you've heard over the last 45 minutes at the May 14th council work session?
Can I ask a question before you go?
Yep.
Answer my question with a question?
Yes, of course. So, I think the council, albeit one council member's missing, I think the council that is here have identified a number of follow-up items that they would like to have more information about. And maybe there's more, but that seemed like a pretty good list. I guess I would, at this point, because I think Councilmember Hunt also alluded to this earlier, one of the big conversation points was whether this little sidearm was going to happen or not, and I think you guys concluded, even though you weren't that direct, that not only is there a sidearm here, but there's also a land and shore sidearm that popped out. So if there's a committee touch, which I'm hearing that there likely will be, I guess the question is, does this work session number two even make sense? Because in the next week or week and a half, I'm not sure how much avalanche of information we're going to be able to get to you. So if ultimately there's information coming, obviously it would need to be provided in advance of the committee meetings, so that it could be talked about at those two separate committee conversations. And I'm not saying, I'm looking at you guys, and some of you are saying maybe, and some of you are saying, I don't know if I like that. So that would be something to talk about, is, I think what Emily and I would like to understand, and maybe the school district, is when does this information need to come back? And if it needs to come back before the May 14th meeting, I think that gives us two weeks. Or ish, maybe three.
How do you figure?
Oh, sorry.
It's five weeks away.
Okay, a month. Seems like two weeks. It seemed like three days probably by the time we get there. So there's a month. So maybe, so some of this stuff could come in if, so I guess, let me be clear, is there still a value to having work session number two?
Well, I don't know why we couldn't just have these go to committee in May. Go to committees, right? If, let's say the information's available May 14th, just send it to Land and Shore and services in May rather than in June.
So the information would have to be available in that.
Well, I prefaced it with, if that information was available.
At the end of April, in order to then be in the packet for the referral at the first meeting in May, to the committee meetings in mid-May.
So you're saying it would have to be available sooner than it would if it was just for committee?
Yeah, now we're back to Keith's two weeks, in order for it to get in the packet for a referral, unless council wants to bend its rules and assumptions about what's available as it becomes referred.
Got it. I do not wish to bend the rules.
I didn't think he did.
As to how things get referred.
Yeah.
Although, council can tell me they disagree. Councilmember Goodman, and then Councilmember Winters.
So, I'm not necessarily opposed to eliminating that work session number two, and giving the administration more time, and the school district some more time, to be able to be ready for June committee meetings. But one of the questions I have is, the city council decision, it says, June 4th, public hearing, so would that be, would the public hearing have been scheduled? Is that the night for the public hearing and the decision?
No. So I think, so the reason why I did this this way, Stacy, was not knowing whether or not this conversation was going to land with a separate committee touch. So if there was no committee touch, then you would potentially, again, could have the hearing on the 4th and the decision, which is, I know, not something we try to do. So the way that this is playing out is, you'd have the hearing on the 4th, you'd then have Land and Shore on the 7th, and services on the 12th, and then you'd come back to council in July for a decision.
I don't think that, I don't think it works to have the public hearing before you have a go-to-committee. You need all the information out before the public can come to a hearing and provide comment.
But you would have all the information, wouldn't you? Because it has to be in the packet that.
Would go to the committees. I mean, it's going to go to Land and Shore, so it's going to have to be in the Land and Shore committee anyway for the 7th?
Hearing would be before the committees?
But all that information would be, the same information that would be going to committee would be available to the full council on June 4th.
So that way, the committee could talk about the public comment at the hearing at committee. So that's the way, I think you guys liked it, was have a hearing, leave the hearing open, go to committee, come back, finish the hearing, and then have the council deliberate and make a decision.
So I don't know precisely what we've done in the past. I'd have to look at each one to see if that, to me, it seems as though, it just seems weird that we would have a public hearing on the 4th. It almost seems like it needs to span more meetings than that. Anyway, I'm just thinking.
Councilmember Winters, time.
I think it's, to get to the question of the May 14th, actually, I think that's incredibly critical. If, I think the conclusion of a May 14th as currently envisioned with whatever additional information that we have, I mean, to me, that would be the ultimate. I'm not, I'm not as sold that it must go to both committees in June. That was actually the point I was trying to make earlier, and that, I think it's going to very much depend upon what happens on May 14th. It may not be, well, it's not assured, and I don't really know what the likelihood or the percent, the chance is, but, you know, May 14th, you know, we might come out of a month from now, from that, five weeks from now, from that meeting, and think, you know what? I think we can do this on June 4th. That possibility is, I think we should be open to that possibility. So I think I would say, let's stay to May 14th, and I think we'll know then, based upon the status of things, how, in my opinion about the committee routes, and one or both will probably be more developed then.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah, I'm really tied to the next work session. We started this here, I want to continue it here, besides the fact that I'm probably the only one that wouldn't be neither of those committees, and wouldn't have a touch. So I personally have a problem there. But we're starting this here, I'd like to see what comes back on May 14th. Like I say, we may have 90% of our questions answered, we may have 10%, I don't know, right? But that's the critical piece of following this. And then where we are there is going to tell us where to go next. But that's, this is what we started here with the council as a whole, because this is a critical piece, and it's important that the council work on it together, so we stay on the same page, and we don't get up there and have a four to three vote on something like this, because we're all on different pages. That's not where we're trying to get to here. So I want to get all that information out and share with all of us, more as a group than that. Committees are still good. I'm not saying whether or not on that, but definitely next work session, and see how much information we get at that point, and how much we feel comfortable with, and how much more we need.
Councilmember Hunt.
Do we have a sense of how the school district's information gathering timeline aligns with this timeline?
I don't. I know that they're aware of the bulk of these questions. They heard them at your linkage meeting, they've had them in the packet, they're here tonight. We, it's council's pleasure as to whether or not you want to get a little feedback from them tonight, a little response. The other thing that I would ask while I've got the mic, is that before we leave tonight, we get some clarity, I think we understand what questions have been posed, but a little foggy on what scope of work you would like the city to undertake between now and May 14th, should we be able to launch a few of those studies? And then we will need to do some information gathering to understand cost of, particularly, I heard some moderate consensus on a few of those items, geotechnical trees, for example, but less so on traffic modeling. Thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember Ray.
Thanks, thank you. So the objective of today's session was really to review the questions that staff had identified and the senior leadership team's response to those questions. So I guess what I'm struggling with right now is, I kind of like the idea of a May 14th meeting, but I would like to have some clarity of what we think the objective of the May 14th work session is going to be. What do we come out of that meeting with, so that we can then start to back up and say, okay, if what we're coming out with is this, here's all the things we have to do in front of it. So do we have an idea what we're, what we're hoping to accomplish on the 14th?
Well, and let me add to that. I think one of the other things about today was, it's sort of a Goldilocks meeting. Is the bed too firm, or is the bed too hard, or is the bed just right? The bed being the process that we're using for this. And so the conversation that we're having right this very second is exactly the conversation that I was hoping we were going to have. Councilmember Goodman, your mic is on. Do you have a question or a comment? No? Okay. So I want to add, I actually think we probably need to do both the work session and the committees, and here's why. Because I've heard people want the work sessions, and I don't think there's any harm with doing a work session, and I also, and I'm hoping that we have Director Cooper from the school district here, and I'm hoping at some point he may come up to the mic and chat with us a little bit about where they're at. But, you know, it's really critical to me that, in the end, we get the information that we need to be able to make a decision. I said six months ago, it's about views, it's about slope stability, and it's about traffic. I said it six months ago, I'm eager to see the data, haven't seen the data, need to see the data for me to hope to have to get to a yes, right? So to the extent that having the work session on the 14th helps guarantee that at the end of the day, we, that I, being greedy, have the data that I need to make a decision as one of seven, then I think it's valuable. The reason I think it's also super important to do a public hearing on June 4th and then go to committee is, work sessions don't have public input. We have members of the community here, we have members of the community that have spoken on this issue passionately at council meetings, and I don't know exactly where the community input is. I mean, we all read the letters that we receive from the community, but I think we also want to provide councilmatic community input. And, you know, I've always viewed that as, certainly public hearings, but in particular committee meetings. And, you know, that's a chance where we get to be a little bit more, roll up our sleeves with the members of the community, and hear, and, you know, not directly respond to inputs, but, you know, staff sometimes hears community concerns reflected in council questions of staff. And so I feel like this is important, that the community input piece gets addressed, and doing that at a work session on May 14th isn't going to give the kind of community input that's going to make me feel like I've done my job in getting community. Other questions? Councilmember Ray?
I just, I wasn't sure I got my last one answered. So, and I don't even know that I need an answer tonight, but I need an answer in the next week or so, which is, what are we coming out of the second work session with? What's the goal of the second work session? Why are we doing it? How is it different than this one? How is it different than the council meeting?
So, I'm going to, I think now might be a good time to have Executive Director Cooper speak to us, because, before he speaks, I'm going to say that if, I certainly want on May 14th to have everybody understand what we're getting from the school district, and understand whether that does or does not suffice for the information that we want to be able to go to the public and to deliberate amongst ourselves. So he could say tonight that he's going to have all that information for us, and he knows what it is, and he's confident that we're going to have everything that we need, and he can rattle it off, and if he can, great. But if he can't, I think that should be one of the goals for the work session on the 14th, is to really, really get the district to say, here's what we intend to give you in response, and is that what you're, is that what you're looking for as a council? And with that.
Hello, members of the council. I'm Jake Cooper, Chief Financial and Operating Officer for the school district, director, executive director, whatever. I'm fine with either of those. I think, as my Capital Projects folks have told me, soils and arborist, those will be done in a few weeks' time, or a week and a half, we should have published reports by professionals. You're more than welcome to have all those and peer review them. Traffic, though, is something I want to talk about, particularly some of the comments earlier about our, what our models do when a school opens and what happens now. And I will say, when Highland, Grand Ridge opened in particular, 2006, there was a lot less housing units in place than when it was opened. And so sometimes when you see our schools go into a, traffic gets worse, it's because a lot of the environment around them has changed dramatically. And so, and Grand Ridge is one of those examples. We model with what we believe our enrollment is going to be, and our patterns of transportation, and then we run those through, just like you, and determine if they're going to fail or not, and then if so, we have to mitigate. So for an example, Second Avenue, the school district paid for a light right out here in front of you. I would say that the service levels still aren't satisfactory to anybody, but we still paid for it and mitigated into a failing system. And so what I'm trying to get at is, even if we do a preliminary study, I assume we would have to dovetail that with the 100-plus units of SFR that are adjacent, and the 300-plus units that are coming from Polygon, because that has to be part of the equation as well. We've had preliminary conversations with Swedish. I'll tell you, they're very positive about how the two entities could coexist. We looked at Swedish on Cherry Hill as an example of a hospital that functions with a huge amount of traffic all around it and surrounding it. So those conversations have had, but I think if we're going to pinpoint exactly what you want on traffic, we're going to need some information from the city about what the developers have recently done adjacent, because I just saw, you know, the new curb bowl being poured on Discovery. Unfortunately, if we have to widen that road, that's going to have to be torn out as an example of what needs to be done in the future. So traffic really concerns me. It's really tough to spin a model that quick, particularly if you're going to do it well, and actually have some data that Mr. Martz can rely on. And so. And so, I just kind of need a little more information about traffic. And trees, the arborist report's going to say what the arborist report's going to say. We've talked about laminated root rot, and that it is in part of the stand. I don't know if that's good or bad from your decision standpoint. If the trees are going to die, then is that good for your decision or bad? I don't know, I'm just going to provide you the information, and ultimately, that's your data set to look at. The same with geotechnical. We have had done preliminary samples just you, and then we, like you did, and we've also sent them off for further testing, so that should be available as well. So, but the traffic one is a, is a real bit of a sticky wicket for me to figure out exactly what you all want on the 14th. So any suggestions to clarify my workload and staff's workload and all our consultants would be very helpful. And then of course, timing is really important. If we want to open an elementary school there, assuming you choose to sell, we'd like to open it September of '20. Historically, Keith touched a little bit on the permitting process, even though that we're our own CPELEed agency, it still takes 12 months of cooperation with our city partners to get a school permitted and open. And so there's a lot of work that happens, and I will say, I won't say control, but we build to your code requirements. So that's where your control is exercised, is your, your code requirements and your land use provisions. And so, and to ensure that you're not arbitrary and capricious and you treat us similar to anybody else, that's what we build to, and those are the standards we follow. So, any suggestions on traffic would be helpful.
Councilmember Goodman?
I can think about it a little bit more, but I think I have a concern about the assumptions that are made in the modeling, and I don't know that they're wrong. I, I just know that I have concerns about traffic generated and whether or not the baseline information is accurate based on current patterns. I think that's where I would start. But to tell you, I would have to be more thoughtful and tell you what I would like to see that would be reasonable information in the time that we have. And I don't think I can rattle it off right a second. It's a totally fair question, Jake.
Because I know, assuming we move forward, the district will have to pay mitigation fees, and they'll also have to do off-site mitigation, depending upon if it's part of your failing, or not your failing, your TIP, Traffic Improvement Plan, right? So, that all happens usually well down the road from ownership, and happens in design and part of the permitting process. This school will be different, it will have structured parking pursuant to the code, which you just added as well. Preliminary designs, we have a very lengthy queue to keep traffic off of Discovery. I think the difficulty with the Highlands is the narrow streets, which makes us having any bus stops even anywhere in the vicinity very difficult. So what originally designed and laid out, running buses through the Highlands is really hard for our folks. Every day I get email about a clip mirror in the Iskua Highlands from my school buses. So, it does force more driving than usual, and I think some of that is a result of the way it was designed, as it was meant to be, you know, we thought it would be a walking utopia. We have a, we're one of the highest rider ships of school buses in the whole state, believe it or not, well above 50%, which is well above the state average and towards the top. So, it's really tough to get people to not drop their kids off on their way to work via a car. And I don't have an eloquent solution for that, because we also, like Councilmember Ray has talked about not making it easy. Well, I believe in my constituents will let me know if I make it a long traversing and difficult, unsafe trip for their student to cross and get into the front doors of those schools. So, we'll have to balance that as well.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, and I understand your question on traffic and what's needed. The one thing I'd like to throw out to have people think about, generally with traffic modeling, we focus on intersections, right? That's what's rated as A, B, C, D, whatever, right? And in this case, I think the rating of intersections is not going to give us much information. We're going to have the one intersection up there at, you know, at Highlands Drive, and that's not going to tell us too much. Somehow we have to look at that whole street, like I say, the width of it, sidewalks. If we're talking about kids really walking there and, and some sort of really good street design that makes it safe, and wide enough for whatever needs to get through there, if you've got two buses coming through there, and they're not driving through most of those streets, right? Because they're not passing each other, that's for sure. So, yeah, so looking at the whole street and how it functions, not just the intersections, I think is a critical piece.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
To add to Councilmember Ramos, I think also the, the emergency vehicles, ambulances that need to get around that area, probably they operate at intersections differently than other vehicles. And so I would be interested in taking that into consideration, and also specific traffic patterns that are, because of the hospital's shift change apparently, you know, that could, I think that could also be important, because it doesn't operate necessarily the same way that, that other businesses do in terms of that traffic pattern. And so I would be concerned to see those specifications in the modeling.
Yeah, I think part of that we can remedy with the slide of starter stop times, and to push them in or out of the shift, that's something we consider. We try to have uniform stop, the start times now, even though we can see Grand Ridge is actually the only different school from all the other elementary schools. So, we can, we can accommodate that through operational decisions as well. As I said, it is difficult to model not knowing when the build-out of all those adjacent homes are going to occur. There's also land use decisions before this council on adjacent properties to the one we're talking about, whether it's mixed-use retail, commercial, residential, and, you know, those decisions, so we'll operate on the best available data, but at the same time, what happens in the future is really tough, tough for us to predict and model. We'll give it a go. I don't know how, I do not believe it'll look like a full traffic study as you would normally see, but we can look at trip counts, and I'm sure there's some more recent data from Polygon who just is now building houses adjacent, so that should be somewhat helpful.
So I'm sorry, that last bit, what won't look like a regular traffic study? I'm not sure I understood.
Well, I don't think I can turn a traffic, a full traffic study between now and May 14th.
Right.
So, that's what I'll have to figure out, how much I can push my staff and consultants on is, if you want to see queuing and how deep we could queue, and, like I said, I think the main intersection on Discovery and Highlands, probably given the volume, and, I don't know if it's going to fail or not, I'm not a traffic expert. But how that new neighborhood interfaces with the elementary school, that'll be something altogether that I haven't figured out yet.
So, I want to point out that this question about traffic, you need to answer the fundamental question. And we can get hung up about what's a traffic study and what's not a traffic study.
Right.
But six months ago, most of the people in the room were, were on council nodal, and we said traffic was a big deal, and that we needed to be able to look people square in the eye and, and tell them that traffic was not going to get broken as a result of this school. So whatever you do, come back and tell us on the 14th, maybe you don't have all the answers on the 14th, but you know what we're looking for, and you know what it's going to take, if we're going to say yes, what it's going to take, which is that we can tell people that it's not going to be broken, and that Swedish is going to be able to do what they need to do. And I appreciate that Cherry Hill operates with a lot more traffic than, than we have, but you understand what we need. And I think we've been consistent on this issue for quite a while. So I don't want to get hung up about May 14th or not May 14th. I want to get, I want to make sure that we get the answers that I think we've been pretty consistently wanting for, for some time.
Yeah, I agree, I just didn't know the, a full, what I heard was full traffic study, and I also heard a revisit of my existing schools at the same request, so that's what I was trying to really clarify.
Well, you know, one thing that, that we, the community has, at various times, had a conversation about Grand Ridge and what it is and what it isn't. And I don't know if this is sufficient for Councilmember Goodman, and I don't want to speak for her, but for myself, understanding, you know, there was an original expectation of 3,400 housing units with a, with an option for 39, right? And we're at like 44 now, something like that, right? Keith? Yes. So, and I know that, you know, I've spoken to this issue with what I think the understanding is in terms of the generation numbers and what we expected for single-family home and multifamily home. For me, that conversation to have a one-pager that says, you know, here's what we thought originally, I mean, I know the generation numbers look a lot more like Trossix than it looks like South Cove, right? I mean, people have moved here in the last 10 years to get their kids into our school system, and so that had, so having a little narrative about that, you know, not, that's, you know, that does, that's not the, that's not the traffic question, but this lingering question that's been out there about how, I'll just say, I think the district does a good job in anticipating needs, but everybody got caught surprised by exactly how much demand there's been for, from parents in the Highlands. And it's a measure of how successful the Highlands has been, and how successful Grand Ridge has been, and you guys have been responding to that. And something that would allow us, something that without, you know, not looking for like a mea culpa and anything, because I don't think there is a mea culpa. I think there was just a lot of things that were unique about the Highlands. And maybe writing that down in some sort of short form that would help us, because this question keeps coming up from members of the community and sometimes from, you know, within ourselves. And I think, I think having some clarity on that, on that story would be helpful. And again, I'm not trying to speak for you, but for my own, you know, when this, when this question comes up. So.
Okay.
Anything else for Director Cooper while he's here?
Thank you, really appreciate the topic.
So, City Administrator Moon, it seems like we got two big traffic questions, right? We've got, what do, what, what are we expecting and when from the school district? And then we have this question about what we want to do internally and when. And I know you want to get resolution on that. Do you feel that if we, you know, if we went to, I think we're fairly close to closing comments, right? If we did that, and then the administration sort of talked to the seven of us individually afterwards to try to give people some time to think about it, and over the next few days, sort of collate that data, do you think that would be a good way to, would you be amenable to that? And then I'll ask my fellow council members if, if you are, if that sounds like a good way to address this question. So first to you and then to my fellow council members.
Sure, you'll tell me if I have not interpreted your question correctly. I, I think both city staff and school district staff have a good understanding of what information is desired. I think, as Jake just spoke about, a few questions about level of detail that can be provided, whether it's by May 14th or prior to whatever decision might be made, and which pieces would come subsequent to a decision on whether to retain or sell, and would be part of the actual land development application. I think for the city, I still, I still have a question of how much work you would like the city to perform on your behalf as property owner. I think we have better clarity on what the school district needs to do. So for me, I would still, before we leave tonight, like to hear as best we can some consensus on what the expectation is for the city to prepare as property owner. If we're not able to provide that feedback now, then that certainly would be something I'd want clarity on, on May 14th. And in the interim, I think we would, as I heard from Jake, we would have access to a few of their reports, and we may then be able to go ahead with peer review on those pieces. But traffic's really the big one on level of effort, time that is required to complete it, and the expense. And I would want some council direction on that before I ask staff to go and procure those services.
So, so let me ask my fellow council members, it seems like there's two ways we can do this, right? One is we can sort of each go through and talk about what we would like, if anything, for the city to do on the traffic piece. The other would be to not try to do that right now, and to have each individual council member come back to the city, you know, my thinking is sometime this week, and, and sort of firm up what people, how people feel. And so, obviously, we're not taking any formal action tonight, but I want to get your thoughts on which of those two directions you'd like to take. Councilmember Goodman?
I would, on the traffic part, I would like the latter one, because I want to think about it a little bit. I've heard comments from my fellow council members here to my left, and I want to articulate what I think I would need to feel comfortable. I'd like to articulate that better, and then I can send that to Emily.
Okay. City Administrator Moon?
One little thing that I thought I would mention is, certainly a quick task is for us to articulate what the typical assumptions are going into a traffic study, and I heard that as a question, so we could lay that out. But there are other questions, Stacy in particular, you posed, that we would need to know consensus on, because it's a different scope of work than maybe what's typically provided.
Councilmember Ray?
I think today was great, lots of good information. I think I understand a lot better than I did coming in to this meeting. That being said, I'd like to have some time to process that and get back to you, and give you some well-thought-out questions and parameters to look at. So, to your point, Council President Martz, I would like to have some time outside this meeting to process this and send thoughts back to city administration.
Is this week reasonable?
Absolutely.
Okay. Councilmember Hunt?
I'm also fine with having it be a one-on-one conversation.
Any other comments? All right, so that's what we'll do, we'll plan on each individually chatting with you about the, the city's internal traffic piece. All right, anything else you guys want to walk us through in this process tonight? Do you have other topics that you want to cover before we?
No, most of our conversation tonight, just pointing out the obvious, has been about the outstanding questions and the need for information. We did not go back and revisit those kind of policy questions. I would anticipate that, I think Councilmember Hunt talked about, that might be a starting place is to actually answer some of those questions, or begin to answer some of those questions, and then decide which forks are in the road ahead of us, and then require additional information at that time. So, I, I think it would still be worthy to try to walk through those questions, need not be tonight, but I imagine that you'll need to be able to have answers to those questions as you respond to residents.
Walk through, I'm sorry, those four questions?
The policy questions, yes. Particularly, you know, some discussion about, is there a fundamental desire to keep, retain the property or to sell it?
So, Councilmember Goodman?
It would seem to me that, knowing the answer to those questions that you just rattled off, means, I, I think we have a lot of outstanding questions, and we wouldn't be ready to really answer those questions about whether we desire to keep or sell it until we have the answers.
Yeah, I don't want to try to have a formal conversation this evening, but what I would like to do is offer everybody a chance to, to make closing comments or thoughts on the issue in front of us and next steps and, and whatnot. So, let's, you want to go around the room? Paul, do you want to kick us off?
Actually, I have a question.
I don't know if your mic was on, but Paul said he has, Councilmember Winterstein said he had no additional comments. Councilmember Ray?
As I said earlier, I think these, this was a good discussion. I'm not sure those are the right policy questions, the ones we've identified there. And I'd like to spend a little more time thinking about what the real underlying policy questions are. Those are very generic policy questions. We have a very, very specific question in front of us, and so I think the policy questions are, are different. And I think that they're, you know, one of my biggest concerns coming into this was, this is not a generic discussion we're having about how to, how to dispose of a piece of property. We're having a very specific discussion about how to deal with that property for this purpose. And I'm not sure those are the right policy questions, so I'd like to take some time to reflect on that.
Fair enough. Councilmember Goodman?
I don't have any additional comments, except I really appreciate those comments, Chris. I agree with that very much.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I think to make the decisions on the policy, in this case, those questions, generated questions, that we need to circle back and answer the original questions. And in my opinion, some of the pieces that I need- opinion, some of the pieces that I need in order to fully consider the policy questions would be the critical areas updating, and I think if we have that information in front of us, that that would be great, especially in a map format. I do have information that there are some critical areas, and so I would like to know where they are specifically in relation to the school, proposed school site. Also, I, there was a little bit of discussion about a peer review on the Arborist, I think, and I am not in favor. I think we can have our own Arborist come out and contract for the city to do the Arborist report, especially because the school has done an Arborist report, but we haven't seen it, and so it's hard to know, it's hard to know if we have a peer review at this point. I think it's just our due diligence to do our own report, the same with the geotechnical report, particularly because there are complications with root rot and with, I think, potentially if the trees have laminated root rot, that affects a number of our, a number of our goals in terms of view shed, and so these are questions that all hinge on each other. View shed and potentially, I think, with erosion, also the geotechnical aspect. And I would like to know from the tree retention code, you mentioned that there may be adjustments. I would like to know more information about how those decisions are made by the city in terms of the tree retention IMC code. And the last thing, generally on the, the policy questions, to Councilmember Ray's point, I think that the questions, and actually, when interim City Administrator Moon was asking the questions, you put in the potential, but it says, for example, is there a planned municipal use? In this case, because we're talking about whether or not the city will retain or surplus, it's hard to say if there's a planned use, because that implies a certain decision. And so I think that, for me, it's more about the planned or potential uses and considering the possibilities. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos?
I agree with Councilmember Ray. This is a unique situation, and being so, I think we have to deal with it in a unique way. We're, in the normal process of making this decision, we would wait and get a lot of information, and that's not going to, it's not going to be available to the level that we would normally want it to be. So being that unique, I think we have to look at some other policy questions on how we would do this, because if we just get to the point of surplus property, sell, and then, then it just kicks into its standard process of going through, you know, SCIPA and the standard permitting and all that kind of stuff. It just goes to standard process, and even, as Cooper mentioned, then we can't be arbitrary and capricious and require things that aren't according to code. So I think we should really consider conditions of sale and go into this in a whole different mode of saying, what do we need to make sure it's going to work ahead of time, because we can't do it after the fact? And so if we need to put conditions of sale on, it's like to make sure everything works right, then, and that's a chance we have to do it, because once you just sell without that, it's a done deal. It's just going to go through the standard process, and there's no way of getting anything back. So I think we ought to look very closely on that. Mr. Niven, you mentioned, you know, the city retaining SEPA rights, putting conditions on road, you know, widening or whatever, these kinds of things that we decide, we want these if this is going to happen or not, because for, for the city to do this, we're going to want some things. I think we ought to look at that type of policy question that would not normally be a way we would deal with things. So upfront, conditions of sale to take care of the concerns we have that we're not going to have all the answers to when we want this to happen.
So, I get to go last. So it's, I think, no secret that I have, have a lot of, a lot of warmth in my heart for the school district. You know, Norm Dix used to be called the congressman from Boeing, and I think sometimes I get called, you know, the councilmember from the school district or something. You know, I spent the first decade in this community, cutting my teeth on boundary reviews and helping to formulate levies and bonds, and I still consider the school district to be an integral and essential part of the success of our community. And so, you know, it's no secret. I would like to get to yes. I hope we, in this process, that we're coming to a clear and stable process that the district can use to address the concerns that we've identified as a community. However, I will say that I, you know, I, I can see that there's a possible outcome, which would be that we wouldn't get the information that we would need. And so until I know that we've arrived at where the district is going to provide the information that the seven of us feel is going to be sufficient to address this, I'm going to, I'm going to have those concerns. I mean, I, it worries me a little that six months ago, a bunch of us expressed concerns, and we haven't seen the data yet on those concerns. And so I'm, I'm optimistic that the district will be able to address those. And again, it's, for me, it's views, it's slope stability, and it's traffic. And, you know, I, I hope to get to yes on this, because I know this is important to the district, and I know they feel that it's going to help alleviate the growth that's occurring in the Highlands and also help with growth in the Valley, as it would allow Clark to refocus to its historical role as a Valley school. But, you know, I have concerns. So we will see how this process goes, and I am, I encourage my fellow councilmembers, as I know they will, to share their thoughts on this process and what they need with the administration, so that if we get to yes or we get to know that it won't be because of missing information, it'll be because of a, of a good evaluation on the part of the seven of us of how we feel about this property and the opportunity. So I want to thank you all for a process that, this feels like it's maybe been a little murkier than some of the processes that we've had, but I think that, I certainly think the administration sees that we're making a good faith effort to identify what we need to, to address this. So, and I thank the city staff for the materials they put together, both for last Monday's meeting and for tonight's meeting.
Could I, could I offer one thing?
Oh, sure.
Sorry. So if it would be helpful to the council, I think there could be a number of questions we might be able to throw to them as you think about this in terms of kind of the extent of the information you would like to see back. So as you think about kind of what you would like to ask for, would it be helpful, bless you, would it be helpful if we posed some questions for you to think about in terms of level of technical detail? Okay, we can do that.
My ask is that we, you know, just as we're trying to get council feedback to you this week, that we try to get, if there are supplemental questions you'd like to get out to us, the timeliness on that, too.
Sure.
Just so that we can, not that we, I don't, we will sell no wine before it's time, but also, you know, not dawdle. Not that you're known for dawdling, but anyhow. With that, unless there's any last minute questions, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody at home.